Open comments.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. I would ask that we amend the agenda this morning just to add a 10-minute executive session during my scheduled time. The Koma exception will be attorney-client. And Rich, do you need any more information than that?
In most ways.
Okay.
No, we're eating.
And we'll just, I anticipate it will be no more than 10 minutes. So just ask that we amend the agenda to allow for that.
You use the.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I would like to motion to add an executive session to the county. I'll second.
Been moved in second to add an executive session to the county council's time. Call of favor.
Thank you, guys.
Just as a heads up, you might have to fill me out on motions because I can't pull anything up today. I went back to the online version. So far, that's more than the, I'm not going to leave that as a guarantee.
I'm saying.
We'll see. Okay. Well, thankfully, I've got email still, so we're good there. Monday afternoon, attended the August intergovernmental luncheon and meeting on at Rock and Case. Of course, we're hosting that this year. Big K State hosts that, or who hosts that after us?
I think City.
Okay. That's correct. Yeah. Okay. Well, guest speakers included, speaking of Riley County, emergency management director and fire chief for Swiss Ute, Jason Hartman from the Kansas Forest Service. And they discussed the importance of controlled burns here in the state. And of course, in Riley County, because we were in Riley County, pitfalls of not doing so. Wasn't able to stick around for the updates because also on Monday afternoon, I had a team's call with NACO's Veterans and Military Service Committee. This is a follow-up to our first executive leadership meeting to get prepared for the 2025-2026 term. Started with an introduction with Seamus Dowdall. He's going to be our new legislative director for the committee from NACO for this term. Sid Conklin, our presiding commissioner from Randolph County, Missouri. I'm glad to have a Midwesterner. And I don't know if I've mentioned it before, but he's a fellow Brig Red One. He did serve at Fort Riley too. So, and Fort Leavenworth as well. So knows Kansas very, very well. Had a chance to talk to him when I was out in February. So. He laid out our legislative and policy agenda to work through here in 2025. Some of the items that we're going to work on this next year, suicide prevention for veterans. Homelessness and housing stability seems to be a big issue just in general, but particular with our veterans. Dental coverage reform and increased coverage overall for veterans, huge issue, believe it or not. And continue to support and focus on the HUD, VASH, Bravo, and SSVF programs. Continued work on expanded state CVSOs and CBO programs. Now that was, but that's something that we've had some discussions on. And additional recommendations included maintaining the integrity of the veteran services. And just working with VA and SANS teams to review veterans mortality teams work. We're going to meet for the first time as a full committee on, believe it or not, September 11th. So should be a good, good committee meeting. Tuesday, I was actually home from work due to some parts issues. Believe it or not, that's still, still a problem trying to get parts. A washer.
Yeah.
Simple washer. Electronics, all those things, easy to get. A simple washer. Just blows my mind. It's very fun. Anyway, but I guess looking at the positive or silver lining, I got to listen to all four sessions of the mental health summit that took place up at Hayes, Fort Hayes State University. Did this via Zoom? Obviously, I wasn't there in person. Lord knows, the world doesn't need two of me floating around. Session one had some introductions. The big one being the, from the Chief State Supreme Justice, Marla Luckerts. I guess Governor Kelly was supposed to speak, but she was sick this week. And I guess I didn't make news. Several members for the public and private healthcare sector discussed ending the criminalization of mental health illnesses, or at least being able to distinguish what those are and try to figure out a better path forward. Considering our ADP at the jail, I tend to agree that's probably a good path moving forward. Session two started with a lived experience speaker. I did not catch her name. I don't know if they actually said her name. I don't know that she actually said her name. That's okay. But she did discuss her lifetime battles with anxiety, depression, mental health, and how she's worked to overcome them. Last speaker at that particular session was the keynote speaker for the first day, Dr. Benjamin Gilner, who discussed his lifetime's work in his book. The other Dr. Gilner, apparently there was another doctor in the same field. Well, just look at the other Dr. Gilner. It's an interesting story. Just leave it at that. Session three was a presentation from Amy Sheerbock from the Fort Hayes Community Engaged Art Program. She's a part of Fort Hayes State University. She works with kids with autism. She also has a child of her own with autism. She works with first responders, so both of those groups can interact, break down social stigmas in the process, using the creation of art. If you recall, I think it was in 2018 or 2019, there was an incident on Hayes where individual with autism was killed by law enforcement in an interaction that they had. So she's trying to break down some of those, some of those walls and discuss that. And, and great detail. Last discussion in the session was assisted outpatient treatment and everything that goes into it and everything that that involves. And then lastly, session four started with a presentation on stepping up Kansas, an initiative dealing with the state's juvenile justice system, which also includes the nation's first technical assistance center, which is built into that particular program. There's a handful of counties, including Riley County, that's part of that currently. There's some struggles with that, but anytime you start something new, there's going to be. So I think we should continue to work with that, try to make that work. Riley County is obviously a younger county, so that kind of makes sense. Next was a panel discussion with professionals from a handful of Kansas counties discussing multi-branch communities of practice and some of the things that they do in our communities. And then very last, we had an Emmy Award winner and video producer, John McCann, who discussed his work and his struggles with mental health along the way, and his connections with Philadelphia Philly star Trey Turner, who's had some struggles along his way. So last year, the year before, the Phillies made the World Series. I think it was two years ago. They lost, but nonetheless, got a large contract. He's star in MLB, but kind of struggled when he made it to Philadelphia. And he's got a documentary on Netflix, which won that Emmy Award that kind of discusses his struggles. This individual's struggles and it all kind of combined. Haven't had the chance to watch it. I put a star on there on Netflix because I have Netflix. Going to watch it eventually. It'll probably take me four years, but that's just kind of how things work sometimes. Anyway, Wednesday, since the day working and getting caught up, was hopeful that everybody will get a four-day weekend. Normally, we don't work on Fridays. And with Monday being Labor Day, everybody will hopefully have a four-day weekend. And we had a pretty amazing potluck yesterday. There's several people, including our department manager, who's moving on, starting next week to a job in Kings of City. So brought something. We have like four tables of food. We could have fed the entire community, I swear. I think that's just like a Midwestern thing. Yeah. So yeah, we just had roses. Like, oh my gosh. I think when we do that in the future, I made the thought that we should do it after work. Because when you do that at like 11 o'clock in the morning, we have the whole afternoon. And all I wanted to do was just take a nap. So anyway, I won't be able to go on anymore. That's really all I have. Looking forward to five days of football starting tonight. So can't wait for that. So I think that's all I've got. Yes. I don't know if I'm going to watch that. Thanks.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm the afternoon meeting. I've been the afternoon luncheon stall and Rock and Case website. Tuesday, I attended, it was in the evening, I said, maybe we'll update properly over some progress. And it was the deputy head of the January Sterling, Brian from DG Consultants, and then. The meeting was in all of the Easts required the continued progress from the project. And analyzing the advocacy, you know, those are the places to go with the comments. And we did write about Jesus fall. Jacob and the shadow, wherever we get the east of that, telling him to arrive. There are some of the, some people that weren't there.
Good shot, probably, but I have. So. Start. Yeah, it is his son.
It was a great turn of the meeting, remember, coming to the hall, playing all the games, film. And Brian updating the group on the status of project and next variable, where they symbolize those stations, like months, another infrastructure would be placed. Many of the gardens, as far as veterans start off the maps and the structures, why isn't it property? I was able to bring them out on that, you know, the whole, we started in my office. So you can study, you say, and that is the line.
You've got the whole infrastructure in your life.
Yeah. Most of that.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So you definitely get a man. It shows all the silver lines, those, all that stuff. So it's really.
Good hold of the court.
Uh, Wednesday, I reviewed today's again, I think, the day of meeting, I'm meeting with some citizens and guy's structure and other information. Later that evening, I attended the gallery, saw some of the Kansas South states of the current doing that center. It's packed. And Governor Kelly was supposed to be there, but it feels that I was.
Jumps a lot of events this week. It must be pretty.
Pretty good. Yeah, but it was, some people haven't seen for a long time. That's all.
On Monday, as we mentioned, we had an intergovernmental luncheon. Then Wednesday was the Funtill's Area Transportation Equity Meeting. Get the funding. But there's two governing groups, the FATA Board, the FATA Inc., main point of business was approval of the 26 budget. Inc. had a forum there. They go to approve it. I'm on the board. And for the third time last four meetings, we did not have a forum. And meetings are online. It was having available. Who still can't get people show up? But then we try to schedule a special meeting next week if the budget.
Are there on that? Are there just certain individuals that don't show up? Uh huh. Okay.
Listen to the.
Yeah. That you don't need to. I'm aware of it. Yeah, that's.
Basically, same at once and.
There are other boards where that happens too.
And that's all I've got.
Very statute ready for business commissioners.
Yes.
First time I have statute corrections. If you'd like to read each one individually.
I'd rather not be here at 3:00.
Money, deep contract insurance. And those are the group. So there's only about 300 of them. What mean, what?
It's from the.
There's one, the sandwich, you got weird knowledge that will do this. What?
Okay.
What didn't get paid for us.
As a total here.
Yeah, those are the bottom.
Third half of the bottom.
Third half of the bottom. And then so.
No, that's.
Yeah.
Probably next segment.
Well, that's in city. Two.
That's how much a portion of will they won't get issued.
And it's 95% of this one group. Is that the last of them that?
I believe so. You know. I do not know for sure. But I would think, I would think so.
Well, I know on the river trail, I think Ogden just doesn't want to take on anymore because the properties that they've got, it's about 10 to 12% of their total budget right now that they're off. And they just, I mean.
A couple of years of special.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not the.
It'd be great to work with somebody to some kind of development, at least a discussion about it anyway. I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Not done that.
Do they, did they set up?
It's kind of reality. It's just kind of one of those things. So. Uh, we'll go ahead and make a move to approve the tax law corrections as written.
Been moved in second to approve the tax law corrections presented on my favors. They're designed.
Give me a second to, in the next five minutes, kind of scroll me down again.
Commissioner, have any void action forms? cooperate. Go, Lord of Grammar, rehire, election assistant, lunching department. Caleb Haller, utility tech, Public Works Department, separation of service, and I'm not sure how you super say it. Keys, name, heart, custodial worker, all briefly signed.
I guess you win some, you lose some, John.
And that's a good one, too.
Okay.
That's not good.
So.
Now. Yeah.
Cause there are.
Yes.
Any. Any other projects?
Program. And on that, that's on program, that's definitely. Oh, that's what the table exactly, you want. You can do that. There are about four times the cost.
I'm about ready just to go back to pay for.
Same thing, county tax system.
I know it kills trees and it's not environmental and whatever, but. It's so.
Possibly, but then the customers are eating much worse. I did have a question, commissioners, regarding the county official's luncheon. If you want to get pizza or sandwiches for that or loose food, that was the question I was asked to ask.
I want steak and lobster.
Just eat a second vote.
Yeah, where are you going to get steak and lobster?
Well, I know where I can get the steak at. The lobster's a little bit more difficult. I take some. Yeah, yeah. Uh, it doesn't matter to me. I probably, let's, yeah, let's do sandwiches. It's a little healthier.
Yeah, food will come.
Okay. Pizza here. You can motion up minutes, commissioners.
Oh, we do? Why you do that? Pizza margaritas?
They also change policy.
I mean, but.
I mean, I'm pretty sure we'll get a good turnout.
You have not had the discussion.
Like you said, you just need a second.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can spend, we can pass a special exemption.
Yeah. Trying to get that, you know. Yeah, that public consumption place, you know, kind of. Exactly. I know. I'm so watered.
And yet what does it go back to?
I'm so numb, watered.
Can you change on the master measures?
No. Go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the, what was it? The August 25th meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I was.
Been moved in second to approve the minutes from August 25th meeting. Call of favor.
Hi.
That is low pressure.
Pretty tentative.
Not too far. You may be saying.
Any other things?
Ever says?
Yeah.
I have a little bit of a. But there's, there's silver lining. Once, once we get done with that, it's done. And it's like, our shoulders like loosen up.
I disagree with that.
Then we have to do like personnel stuff. You had to say that, didn't you?
Any instructions first off?
Well, we're not here on Monday, so there's no press conference.
True. Big fun. Uh, maybe you have Mr. Alman at 9:00.
If you want to be here on Monday, that's perfectly fine. I promise I won't steal your parking spot.
Yeah, right. Every time we, in that, in a Friday from 1:00, there's John in my spot.
I keep telling him, I see your vehicle getting towed.
The, the. Awesome.
Chat a little bit on. Yeah, we got a photocopy of that.
Oh, did you?
I was like the handwritten notes.
Yeah.
Are you watching what's happening over in Missouri?
I was in Missouri last weekend and I happened out watching what's happening. I see some of the hurting things.
Yeah. You also stuff over in Jackson and Black County.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And visibly, I'm kind of like.
I say that because I think what's happening there is going to slide across the border. I remember next year is an election year. Which is so fun, but okay.
Miami County, I guess, is having budget battle. My wife's, that's where she's from. She's.
And I heard the.
Upstory in the budget this year. Space, like we're full heap up and cause of them, if that people.
So. We could Capital Journal. It was on Facebook, but in Capital Journal. City of Topeka's budget hearing was pretty lively. Those hot counties.
We've realized my stat update is the day of the budget hearing.
Before or after?
I have not got a look.
Let's. CP.
I think I have a board.
Yeah.
I have a 30 shots. And and from certain condition.
We did have a conversation with an individual who said they would rather have their own value go down, not keep changing as this lot.
Let's see. Does this guy see the amount, you know?
See the name.
Or maybe it's just a certificate that he has. Sort of like a public management member, manager, something like that. Probably not his title.
And that's like, oh, me. Yeah, I don't count.
This level of candidate wants saying the valuation fails.
Well, there's two commissioners are kind of pushing that from the users.
There are no measures.
Yeah, questions, John.
Didn't, that's the question about.
Yeah, I mean, thinking back to this.
Oh, hey, took the keyboard away. More of.
Ready? Morning, Commissioner John Ellerman, our Public Works Director. I have, first thing on my list today is the federal fund exchange. I'm getting down to the very wire on doing this, but I may request the, so we can request to exchange for funds, needs the commissioner's chairman's signature on these to do. It's 90 cents on the dollar for our allocated federal funding obligation. K not of this year, it, our obligation authority was 200, 1,100 and almost $80. With the exchange, we would receive 181,061 dollars, 80 cents back. This, I would request that these be deposited in our federal, our CIP under FFV funds that we've been. that we've been saving up for. Just basically a road and bridge project that. Comes up that we need funds for that we don't have necessarily planned. Uh, we're getting close to where we're probably starting looking for a project for that. Um, but we wanted to get these sales tax and other stuff done before we dip into here first, but. Um. So that's what that is, um. I'm hoping to get our overlay project finished and submitted for it to get reimbursed for that. With this money, I might have till September fifteenth to get it done and. They've yet started to overlay. I think once they start, it will, uh, just be a matter of a week or so, a couple of days to work. They have started milling this week. Skyway.
On what road?
Skyway, uh. It'll be going, though, Skyway, Stack Hill, and then Rosencutter and Manhattan, and. They're gonna move supposedly in that order as of right now, but. Had issues with the plant, so put us behind a little bit.
That.
That's all, thanks.
That's all.
Question?
Oh, lots.
I'll make up answers as I go.
At least you're honest. No, we're good. Uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the chairman's sign the request to exchange federal funds with the state of Kansas and deposit the funds in CIP for use of future transportation related projects.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the chairman's sign and request to exchange federal funds with the state of Kansas. Positive funds and CIP for use in future transportation, but all favor.
Aye.
Chair, please.
Okay, next item I have here is a request to fill a utility tech position. Just a personally. Sign the action form for, um, utility tech, he. He went back to his old employer that gave a little better deal or something more than he wanted to do than what he was doing for us, so. Um. The full-time position, it's really pretty been needed position that we find out. Once we took over the operations of all the benefit districts, we're water districts. Um, they, they're the ones that go out and repair or look at the stations, check them and the, the lagoons. Do water sampling, have the daily water samples at the water districts. Um, meter reads monthly. As of right now, until we get rid of the treatment plant at University Park, those are daily testing and sampling and. Visits on there, so this position's been pretty important to have the two people that we have. Question to fill it back.
Thank you. Been instructed to approve filling a, filling a tech position, all favor. Bye, John.
Thank you.
Last, it's last week, we opened it. So John, I just looked at the position so that you would know, and I don't think John knew either, but just so you're aware, we did open it in twenty-four and twenty-five, the same position, and it was open about two months. And you've got forty-three applicants and forty-nine applicants, so just for perspective. Um, you know, we unfortunately have had it open several times, but we have had. Interest and we have hired two great candidates from those last two and. Unfortunately have to hire another one, so.
They can search the plan with T.
We've already been on the same. Can we listen to that?
Now, we can go back in, you two. If you get, if you get twenty minutes, we want you to, I mean, yeah, yeah.
How long you want to go, commissioners? There's just been hands.
He's like Chen.
You'll need to dance.
Well, I was. Twenty's fine with me.
I don't want to tell you like the question, but it's going to get back down to the.
A short topic, if you can hear it, and. Beautiful.
Nothing seems short these days, so.
That's all, you know, the third day.
There were existing projects. And really, really.
He may not like reading.
I. Here, he may not play for the season.
That's right, straight forward to the brain.
That's not what I'm hearing, I'm hearing it's Achilles.
I've heard that.
That's, that's what I heard.
And they just wrapped him.
Mm, not for any reason, right?
Yeah, sprains can linger for quite some time. Achilles, sometimes you don't know you've actually done something to it, which would make sense as to why he just walked off the field on Saturday, but. Um, whatever it is, I, I hope he heals, I don't wish bad on the kid.
And so it's kind of bad, and often, you know.
I don't agree. But the one silver lining from Saturday is I mentioned on Monday, and we, they have some other options. And I, quite honestly, they need to take the leash off of Avery and let him run.
Well, there's three.
I understand that, but. You also have to put some W's up too.
He sucks, I mean, it.
You're gonna have to weigh the, the pluses and the negatives on that, I mean, he is as slick as butter.
He's a really good thrower as well last game, I think he even threw the ball.
Uh, yeah, I think getting some tall, lanky and speedy receivers. Kind of makes sense.
I'm not so sure he needs to, our little line will start opening some holes for running back, yeah, I don't know who said.
Well, it's.
I thought they did good half of that team, but. Run, walking has a whole different mind.
Yeah, it is. And they made a lot of mental errors, scheme errors.
Okay, what's down, what it was talking about, people played one, you're watching, what if it's supposed to pull a block in front of, it was behind me.
Yeah, I know.
I saw that. We could, he but, saw that.
And it tells me one of two things, it tells me, one, your quarterback's obviously faster than your offensive line, that's something you gotta work out.
I don't think we should have wasted the guy. Yeah, that's not what you do, that's actually, yeah, yeah, you're, you're not gonna find a momentum, it was actually good game with that.
When you start off the league.
He's about the speed. Endless.
The second thing on that particular fourth down two is there was kind of no falling forward and stretching, it was kind of wrapping up and just going down. Kind of take issue with that, I mean, you're talking three feet. He's six foot something.
Yeah.
I mean, you should be able to just fall over and get three feet, I mean. Inertia just by itself should. Key to the moment, whatever, I guess. But you know, that, I was listening to a podcast and like, you know, we had three turnovers on downs on fourth downs, that's a turnover. We had five turnovers in that game if you count the two bombs, so.
Yeah, but you can't give it one yard twice.
Right.
But free, I think I said, watch me on months of that.
Right.
Here, the, you know, for, you know.
And even if we had gotten that fourth down. Obviously, we're not trusting our special teams at this open time, so, um.
Yeah, we got used to first pass, we should have just hit that football.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know the field was crap and it was raining, but.
That's what they didn't get, and I mean, a fourteen yard for your first one on a wet song surface, that's like.
Yeah.
Although, I don't know, really with that, I heard your netball, centering, or not.
Yeah.
It was worth, I think it was just getting overconfident, a little bit of a point.
I mean, I watched the PATs and stuff, they were pretty spot on, they should have been able to hit that one.
Yeah, this is for the, uh, the issue.
And letting, obviously, the, the, he did, you go. You go transfer, yeah, and he didn't even find himself after the boat, yeah, they were.
Looking at like.
But it's soccer guy, isn't he? He's like Martin Gramatico.
Maybe when he jumped, then he transitioned to put a lot of story on his.
Well, the same thing like with Martin Gramatico.
Football coach in his son, restorator, and said, hey, I'm not football.
If you can kick, you kick a ball between here, you can kick a ball between there.
They say he wasn't motion, just motion, since every time, and he's like the, number two in the degree at that level, or he's done. It's all, I don't want to say. Watching him business. Yeah, he didn't get himself. Late, late.
From Grand Canyon, can we be calling or something? Obscure. No obscure when you're named after geographical things and not. No offense, like Grand Canyon College, but.
No, I'm not seeing the dick, and, you know, it's a good, a good environment, dry and see how it does, you know, yeah. He's that way.
I did hear the field was just absolutely atrocious. They say it rains over there, like thirty, fifty-three days, but there's a whole week of, and not really any tires, and it feels sad, it hurts so much, so. Figures.
So. Game where Smell's the man, he was getting lines, maybe.
That was against Iowa State too. We lost, I guess, five out of the last six against. I was there in twenty-one where they handed the ball off to Brice Hall on the first play of the game, he went seventy-eight yards, I'm like, yeah, this ain't gonna end well.
Yeah, it's gonna be this year.
Do you have anything else to go with me?
Um, and I'm talking a little about. Well, I haven't really said a few sessions, but those did all speak.
Okay.
Do that.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and make a motion that the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie, and Commissioner Ford with Jacob Hansen, County Counselor, recessed to executive session pursuant to the attorney-client consultation exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act regarding confidential legal advice in the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at nine twenty-five AM.
I would second that.
Been moved in second, been moved in seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated under the attorney-client consultation exception to the ends of meeting and all favor.
Aye. Aye. The breeze on August. October twenty eighth.
Commissioners are meeting as last.
Uh, go ahead and move the board of county commissioners to the mouth of the executive session.
We've moved in seconds, the board of county commissioners to the mouth of the executive session. All in favor?
Aye. Awesome. Move that uh, the record reflect actions shall be uh, taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
Second.
Been moved in second, record reflect action. Should we take inconsistent with the consensus reached in executive session on favor? Aye.
Very good. All right, commissioners, moving on to administrative session. Uh, the only thing I really would like to go over is just a little bit of an overview of the legislative KAC Legislative Policy Committee discussion. That took place in Topeka yesterday that I went ahead and attended. Uh, there was plenty of robust conversation. I I passed out to you guys earlier just what the agenda was and. All the points of of uh, discussion that were had. Uh, a lot of it, of course, concerned property appraisal reform. I think that was spearheaded mostly by Cedric County individuals. There are multiple subpoints under that. You'll notice it just says property tax reform, but there are many different ideas on. How to go about that. And to be fair, I don't believe uh. There was much agreement on a single one of those issues, at least among the individuals there. Uh, there was also, of course. I think I'm just gonna go over the ones that had a little bit more um. Of a discussion to it. Some of some of the topics I think everybody had. Uh, some agreement with, just for an example, um, there was one county who who talked about public notice flexibility. And particularly uh, cities recently were allowed to use websites. To uh, use as a legal publication. And so one of the counties suggested, well, if this, if it's good enough for the cities, why can't counties also do the same? So we wanted the, I, we mo- mostly everybody thought that was a pretty good idea and maybe that's something we wanna wanna consider in the future. So there was that discussion um.
When you say website, does it mean like. The Rattler County, I'm just using Rattler, the Rattler County website or you still have to use a website of.
Yeah, you know, I haven't looked specifically into that issue, but just kind of knowing what, you know, the purpose of public. Public notice is supposed to be is just, I I would imagine it should be something related to the county itself.
Okay.
Um, not essentially not needing to use a.
Cause in our case here, we do have a publication that. Has their own website, would.
Right.
Would it be that or would it be our own?
Mm hmm. Cause I I think that's part of part of this conversation.
Chart ourselves to put that on there, but there would be still charts to you.
The.
Their websites.
Right, right. And the the only necessarily counter I can think of of why we would probably still need to use a. Uh, a publisher such as Mercury or something similar to that is their. Audience, the capture of their audience is much like, is 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 much larger than what we have on our website.
That one should be. Something publication that's with each. And then just ten, ten, ten percent.
Yeah.
Well, it's assuming more, more, more than one person, but there ought to be, if it gets below a certain percentage of coverage of the town. Should be, you know, right there in some.
Yeah, uh, it's a, it's a good idea.
Yeah, the whole intent legislation, so public game didn't have to spend an awful.
Right.
On the page, you know, the, they intend is just the post among the town with that no cost of the tax fare and be bad as. Mr. Pointz out, it's really not that broad because. And the. Location.
One of the um, if we're ready to move on, another point that I found that was uh, fairly interesting, I thought was. Uh, there was the discussion brought up about sales tax exemptions. Uh, and the fact that the state has over one hundred. Different kinds of exemptions for sales tax. And that also means. Yeah, over, over. I'm just saying over one hundred. Uh, cause I, yeah, it's, it's definitely over. Um, and so the discussion kind of was that. You know, when, when the state exempts, that also exempts us as well as county and a city particularly. And so maybe there's some ideas floating around there that instead of doing it uh, it on an exemption basis, they do it on a rebate basis. Where it's still paid. And then once, yeah.
They're both.
Yeah, once they, once they go through and then they'll rebate the taxes back. And it's a win honestly for the state as well because they'll get, they'll generate interest. On the money received prior to them then giving it back to uh, the individuals at the end of the tax year. So. We're hoping, I think there was some good hope that that maybe gets traction um.
Was there any discussion on the point five sales tax that comes back?
Yeah.
County of basically making that a fifty fifty draw instead of counties having to give two thirds of that back to municipalities. And I understand the league of municipalities and um, you know, city entities are gonna obviously fight for that, but um. It's of my opinion in order to bring property tax. Down and kind of level the playing field a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, you're gonna have to add sales tax to that equation and that'd be one way to do it.
Yeah.
I think one way to. Do that locally and you're gonna have to do it locally at some point in time. States basically gotten out of the property tax, other than the twenty mils they paid back to the school district and that'll be their battle of the fight in twenty twenty seven, but um.
Yeah, there was, I think there was some light talk about that, but the focus mostly was on this concept of of a tax rebate rather than just a straight exemption.
I do think. This is my personal opinion. We, we gotta look at our overall exemptions. Both through sales tax and property tax. Um, it's ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. Yeah.
Um, one thing, one uh, other interesting point to bring up, and I know I might be running on my time here. Uh, Richard, I got a few minutes. Okay.
Great.
Okay, uh, one other interesting point, um, and. I bring it up because I, even though I likely know the board's position on this, it's. The fact of the matter is that it's going to be coming down the state pipeline regardless. And that would be property valuation caps.
Yeah.
Tax appraisal caps. That topic's gonna come up. They, you know, folks, I think generally opinions were mixed. During the discussion, although I I I would like to say overall it was against uh, caps. Uh, in general, but. The point was is that KAC as a group needs to. Find a position on that because it's gonna be brought up during the session. Uh, and there needs to be a position one way or the other. So I would encourage. The board, of course, to to find a position themselves and so that way I can go ahead and and advocate for you guys on that.
As I was mentioning earlier, this is a topic of discussion over in the. Yes, sort of Kansas City area, Platte Jackson County.
Mm hmm.
Um. It's probably a discussion across the country, to be honest with you at this point. I actually had a conversation with an individual this last week who said they would rather have their. Property values go down on their own home that they've owned for quite some time than to have their property tax continue to go up.
Yeah.
So there is um. So. I walked away from the conversation. Um. But. You obviously have to understand that there is some, there's some quarrel with that.
True.
And maybe it's justified, maybe it's not, but um. You know, I tend to believe that there's got to be equity in that, that, you know, if you're. Older person that owned your home for thirty years and there's a home right next to you that's. Exactly the same, exactly in the same market and it's just been bought by a new family and you're paying two different property taxes. It's not equal. And at some point in time, that's gonna play out. I understand that the majority of us may not be part of that equation when that actually occurs, but at some point in time, that's gonna play out. And I don't know, I was too young to remember the last three appraisal process. But it sounds pretty damn painful to people who've been through the.
Yeah, I think, I think there was a discussion that. That when they went through that process, that cost over a billion dollars just to go through that process again.
And it costs a lot of people, a lot of counties. You know. Their appraisal, people just walk away. So there's a, there's a hard cost to that too. That's probably not included in.
Yeah.
It's an artificial solution. Doesn't solve anything. Makes people feel good, I guess. Some people feel good, they think they're getting. But it. But this changing and the others like sales tax exemptions and. Local sales tax question, that would be the best thing, you know.
And those are tough dialogues to have and those are tough policy decisions to make. But, you know, at the end of the day, those are foundational. They, they actually provide solid change.
Right. One other point, a discussion I'd like to bring up before I I pass the baton over here is. Uh, of course, RHIDs were brought up and so that was an opportunity for me to go ahead and provide a little bit of context. Uh, along with myself and I think Park County had some topics as well as, of course, Leavenworth County. Um, and so the, the general discussion was good. Uh. The point I suppose in bringing it up is that this is another topic that from everybody's understanding is going to be a hot topic. For discussion in this legislative session. Is going to be talked about and we need to again have. Have some sort of position on where we are at, what we maybe like to see the legislation look like. What kind of differences we want, the mains, that the main points that we were, that were discussed during the the committee meeting uh, typically were. One, make it clear what the public notice like hearing uh, uh, requirements or at least public notice to the county. In the process of when we need to start being involved and when we can go ahead and respond. With whether or not we would like to be involved in the process or not. Whether or not we need to go ahead and veto the process. The second point was. With that, with with the way the statute was drafted and which we are very aware of. It takes affirmative action from us to say we do not want to be included. Uh, some counties uh, are the opinion that it really needs to be reversed.
Yeah.
Where it really needs to be, we need to take affirmative action to say that we want to be involved. There was also some interesting discussion that that. Maybe there needs to be an option where the county can just opt out, but it doesn't kill the entire bill if the city and the school district want to exempt themselves from taxes and go through this process.
Yeah.
Then more power to them, but the county can still collect. Uh, I think those were some interesting points uh, to consider.
I agree. The, the all or nothing thing is. Um, tragic in this case, particularly if you are a. Smaller county where I could see this actually working. Um, where you really don't have any options and you kind of can use this ploy to bring some people in, build some housing. Use it as an economic development tool, which, which is how it was originally intended. Right, but now we blew the lid off of it. Now it's just a free for all.
When especially since the individuals that would be subject to still be paying property tax, they're still paying property tax. Um, you know.
I mean, seeing it's just school.
Diverting you on where it gets.
And the counties pretty much live off of property tax. The impacts of that are far different than the cities that could incorporate sales tax and make up the difference in the short term and to offset it. Whereas the other two entities can't do that. They just don't have that option. Um, I know we just talked about sales tax, so I won't beat that dead horse, but. You know.
Yeah, so overall, good lively, I think, discussion in the, in the committee a little. Uh, everybody has their opinions, of course. Uh, and we're trying to nail down maybe what. You know, at least KAC is trying to nail down what the overall position is gonna be, so.
How's it going to be topics?
So uh, regarding our topics, um, I wasn't able to bring them up during this session, but I'm going to on the next one. Uh, the topics went late into the evening, uh, mainly due to. Not to throw Cedric County under the bus, but they had a lot of ideas they wanted to bring forward and so. Uh, it just took up quite a bit of time. Yeah, Leavenworth was due, so we're, we're gonna be on the, on the agenda there for, for this next session, which. Uh, just mark your calendars. It's gonna be September twenty fourth at two thirty PM. Okay, and it'll be injection city. So uh, if you guys want to show up in person, it'll just be. I'm skipping and jumping away.
Good.
All right, I'm with that. I I have nothing, nothing more unless the, the board has questions for me.
Um, it's smart. Morning Commissioner Cory Meyer, ITGIS Director here for staff update. I will. Move through quickly here. The uh. Outside of some of the normal day to days, uh, Mark continued work in assisting with the uh, window replacement project and CPE. Um. Last report, there were thirty eight windows out, thirty eight windows in. Um, we have completely moved community corrections back into their original location. Now they are all the way back. All their windows are finished. And uh, so they're working through GIS. GIS actually relocated all of them over into my office, so we are cozy. Uh, over in our building.
Maybe they can just stay there. We can fix. So that's like.
No. Uh.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. I won't ask again.
Yeah, uh, moving on, so um. Uh, then uh, uh, the EMS building, finishing up some final little details, some things like ADA. Uh, programming on handicap but. Finishing up some final little details, some things like ADA, uh, programming on handicap buttons, just making sure that the little fine details are, are all getting sorted out.
We're gonna have a football watch party some point in time. I won't ask again.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it'd be a prime place. So we've got a little bit of checklist on, on our side. Again, more of the settling in, getting used to building the flow, the function and those kind of things and then wrapping up as, as things come up, but, uh. Uh, again, love that project, love the way all that's turned out, it's gone very well there, so. The EM, uh, remodel of the old EMS, our involvement in putting together costs and. Uh, sitting in on the committee to go through the design and function and all that, uh, moving along, uh, very well. Um, again, a lot of what, uh, from our perspective will be in that building will be the things that we did and learned from EMS as we move forward in regards to. Uh, the, uh, the O C room, how the offices will be set up, a lot of the technology and stuff over there, so, um, looking forward to getting that project going. We shuffled some of the EM staff around over in H D as they got settled and now they had, had some things to make their function and flow work better, better, but we've, uh, got that going. And then in regards to your move here and then, uh, options of what to do downtown, um, John and I have met with, uh. B H S, we've met with Bruce, we have met with Furniture Company, we, we are, uh, putting together a lot of information. We're shooting for next Thursday, I believe that we will be bringing information for, uh, back to you on that. So we have designs, we have pictures, we have some things that we could show, go over what furniture might look like, including if you want the option of. Replacing chairs, um, so, uh, next Thursday, we'll really want the, yes, we wanna do this, let's go that direction. Uh, or, you know, that way we can move this along. You start to let your mind think a little bit. I just said thirty eight out of sixty windows have been done, thirty one of those sixty windows put back in, so they're moving along fairly well.
We're gonna be way down before February.
Hey, I'm, I'm not gonna, uh, uh, rock the boat there, but, uh.
I was thinking from day one, cause I just.
They're moving along well, um, they're moving along well, so. Yeah, yes, yeah, so, um, I.
I was also gonna make a suggestion at some point after the windows are done, good power washing of the building might be in order too.
And we need to get a regular maintenance plan on painting the windows because even the hard new ones, okay, you know, pop, but they're getting on the outside, you know. It's just amazing how quickly.
Yeah, I think we can come across some services. There used to be a gentleman here in town, he used to. Yeah, but. Is there, okay.
It's in downtown.
Okay.
I mean, and there are windows that open and so forth now, so those that have moved back in areas where as the windows are, they're like, hey.
Looking forward to being able to open my windows since.
Yeah, air, I won't call it fresh air, the ones on the backside of the building, you know, in the alley, I, I, you know, it's, it's air.
They've got the Manhattan, New York view, I've got the Manhattan, Kansas.
Yeah, so. But, uh, that's moving very well, uh, it's going on quite well. Phone system, I'll wrap everything kind of into one conversation here. We're still on target to move from our current call manager to Web X in September. We've done our first port of numbers as a test, which are our I T numbers. Um, and so that's gone very well, uh, many departments I'm in conversations with about their. What's called a D I D or their direct dial numbers. He has the seven digit or the ten digit number, they can call and it rings directly to a phone. Uh, minimizing some of those down, I found a many departments didn't realize they, some of their staff even had them. Uh, so we're going through those conversations, but that list is whittled way down and we're ready to move forward. Um, we are in conversations if we can do that final port over on a weekend, so that's what we're shooting for. Uh, the way it's no disruption to a Monday through Friday business. It can't come to that, we'll probably shoot for a Friday where ninety percent, uh, you know, usually go home around noon or one o'clock. Uh, but we're, we're moving that forward. And in doing so, uh, last month, I was able to, uh, disconnect one of the accounts services that we have, which was around a thirty five hundred dollar a month bill. Uh, and so those are part of the things that I said that I would be doing as going through with this phone system change. Um, those savings were reflected in the twenty twenty six budget when those were set. Um, so, um, once we get to October after the move, I'll be able to reduce our communication costs by another fifteen hundred dollars a month. Um, so we're, we're moving things along very well and, uh, we're going to have a, a lot new, a lot more options and availability of what we can do with the new phone system. So we're looking forward to that as we get, get there.
Curiosity on that, will there be an option to move office calls to like personal cell phone?
So the system comes with an app you can have on your phone and when the app is there, it will ring, uh, along with, or you can have it ring in place of, we've already tested that. Um, so as we are shorthanded right now and we're running around, we have it on our phones and we might be here or in courts or somewhere. And when our help desk line rings, our phone will buzz and ring, we can answer right there on our cell phone and be able to help out so that we don't miss getting anybody taken care of, so. Yeah, the, uh, there'll also be, uh, Web X installed on all the computers instead of chatter. Web X, you can also answer on there and you can do a voice call, uh, with or without video directly from your computer or laptop and so forth also. Yeah, yeah, so. Integrates with your calendar, so if you have an appointment on there, then it's also involved in that as well, so, yeah, we got, we'll have a lot of function and feature out of that. The, uh, Health Department, uh, E M R, uh, all the information went out, R F P responses are coming back. Uh, I believe they're coming into the clerk's office and those will be delivered to Diane, um, that goes until September second. And then the review team will start to go through them, so that process is moving along. Lot of questions, lot of questions that came in, which is understandable. Uh, answered by, uh, Jacob, myself, Jake Clark, uh, Diane, and getting those responses and stuff back, so that's moving forward. We're in the process of replacing twenty laptops right now. We're not gonna do any desktop replacements this year, uh, we'll move those, we'll continue those into next year. Uh, we will do some monitor upgrades, um, trying to get newer monitors replaced as we go through. It, it really helps people, folks at their desk, you, you, you just slowly over time get accustomed to or used to that that monitor's getting. Dimmer, the lighting on it is changing and it really helps, uh, uh, if we, we, we get those on a rotational placement easier on the eyes and so forth. We got some conference rooms that we're still looking at doing some audio video upgrade in as well as, uh, uh, over in the commission chambers. We will not be going back with, uh, screen and the projector, we will be going with, uh, multiple TVs in there. The way we're not covering up any of the windows, if we go forward with that remodel and closing off one or two of the pillars. Then you'll see in the options we're gonna present and where you would sit and where, uh, you would see a screen as well as where the, uh, patrons would see a screen that are sitting in the, in the room. Um, the layout also allows for more space in there, um, when we do, uh, meetings like our, uh, county officials lunching and stuff like that, which. Right now it kind of gets a little, you know, crowded at times, but it's going well. The move to and from, uh, Potter Hall for extension went very well, they had a very successful fare. Uh, security projects, um, those are always ongoing, I don't get into a lot of details, but everybody has been, uh, involved in our last one. Uh, where we rolled out Duo, um, that way we have multi-factor authentication on our devices. The, uh, working with the appraiser's office there, uh, and the, on the parcel tax search. For us to move to a new vendor, so we're in the process of getting that set up, data transferred, those kind of communications. It also heavily involves G I S because now the parcel tax search will have a very heavy, uh, embedded G I S map in the back of it. Where you can turn layers off and on as you're doing those parcel searches, uh, we did not have that kind of capability in our, in current parcel search, uh, system that we have now. I have been looking into technology grants and working with the company, just seeing what's out there and how those options, what those might be. Uh, it's just feelers and understanding to get more familiar with, but as we continue to have projects on things, I'm finding there's a lot out there. Um, but that's all I have this time on those, it's just that I'm starting to try to learn how those might be helpful, uh, for Riley County and, and some of the things that we have going on. Uh, it's been mentioned before, uh, the, the, the move of WIC on Fort Riley. Um, we are working, we're working through those processes, we're working through. The communications with the base and finding out what we can and can't do and all the processes and procedures, we're keeping track of. Uh, time and materials as we go on this, it, it, it's, it'll get done, but, uh, it'll, it'll be, uh. It'll be a test along the way to get them situated in there, internet and so forth, and kind of down in a basement area now. Um, base internet is not the best, but we'll, we'll do everything we can to make sure that their services are taken care of, uh, as we get there. We have, uh, also been working with Public Works in regards to the fuel station, everybody's been seeing those emails coming through. Uh, at this point, we may just move to barrels and hand pumps, I'm not sure. But, uh, also their, uh, primary application that they have out there called Pub Works is, uh, coming into life, so we're assisting them in review of a replacement of that product. Been pretty busy over in the courts lately as well, they've had a few major cases going on, I'm sure everybody is aware of that, um, regards to media. And then their staffing issues that they're starting to have in regards to, uh, judge assistants or A A's and so forth. Uh, so we are working with them and getting a, uh, speech to text application going up so that, you know, a court case is completed. Uh, they will be able to take the digital recording of that and it will output it into a documented digitized form, um, so it's, uh. That's an area across the state that is starting to see where there's not a lot of staff that can do that work, uh. The, uh, transcriber transcription, uh, folks who would go in and write the whole thing in shorthand, you know, you got about twelve keys, but it can write an entire document. It's, uh, it's, uh, there's not many out there anymore that can do it, so, um. Transfer station, we're looking at upgrading and expanding the number of cameras out there. The incidents have increased over time and we want to make sure that our coverage, uh, out there is good, um, it's a high traffic area and, uh. Um, and then, um, we're also evaluating expanding the outside cameras here in, uh, the Health Department area recently. Multiple times now in the last two months, the Police Department has come to us asking for video because of multiple break-ins in cars and homes. Um, it, uh, the area along the south side here and up to that neighborhood is, uh, apparently a fairly targeted area. And so we want to make sure that our assets are taken care of and, you know, if we have incident, then we can, uh, we can take care of that correctly. Uh, on the G I S side, again, the projects that are involved, uh, the, uh, Public Works application, the Treasurers Parcel Search. Uh, they've got some backend work that they're doing to streamline some of the, uh, applications that the Treasurer's Office uses. Um, we also have, uh, got a section type project that, uh, that we're gonna be working on, so we've started to, uh. Contract for section ties to be gone out and marked for us so that we can get better accuracy on, uh. On measurements and lines and so forth, and especially up around the lake area where some of those are hard to get to. So with that, I'm sure and probably over my time and didn't mean to, um, I'll blame that on Jake. But if there are any questions, let me know, I'd be glad to answer, I'll see you in a little bit with a position request.
Yeah, actually.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way of working with W T C on getting better internet to. WIC and our services.
On base?
Uh huh.
Uh, on base, you can only go with their approved contracted companies. Uh, that's how it works with moving companies, that's how it works with, uh, internet services, they use, uh, Avaya or Vive or whatever is out there. And we have to go through the non D O D side, which is not even in Kansas, you gotta talk to somebody in some other state. Last time we did it and worked with them, the service was not good. Um, you are always on a shared connection, you're never on your own dedicated. Um, so we hope, uh, which is why we went away from them before and we actually, right now, uh, at the hospital. We're providing their service off of cellular, um, through Verizon, we're hopeful.
We're gonna have a conversation on that.
Yeah. That, that, that we can do that, but, uh, you know, nine computers out there with phones and they all have to have internet access and communicate in that way. They need good service, so, yeah.
We'll have a conversation.
We'll, we'll get it figured out.
Yes, thank you.
Vivian Leva, Public Information Officer, my monthly staff update. Wanted to start off first with the L E P C, so the next meeting of the Local Emergency Planning Committee is October seventh. And it'll be held over here at the new EMS headquarters. At the meeting, we will discuss draft bylaws, which I attached as part of the packet. If approved, I'll drink, I'll bring that draft back to you for formal review and hopefully adoption. The draft is based on templates from the E P A and K D H E. And, uh, we made changes to fit Riley County and Jacob was kind enough to review everything, so we should be pretty well good to go. Also at the October seventh meeting, Robert Cox with Emergency Management will host the annual Riley County Integrated Preparedness, Preparedness Planning Workshop. Um, with feedback from all the participating organizations, uh, Robert will, and, and Lori has done this for many years, has done a great job with it. Um, but we'll create the formal schedule of exercises and training opportunities for the year, um, covering the appropriate needs and threats and. Required reports for the organizations in the area and, uh, the annual process kind of ensures collaboration and although. Um, even if organizations are not like directly involved in an exercise, there's an opportunity to go, um. Observe, so the next exercise is a tabletop scheduled at the Manhattan Regional Airport on September ninth, so I'm planning to go to that. I, um, on August twenty first, the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program held their announcement ceremony and I wanted to bring you a list of the participants that includes our two people. It's pretty impressive, there's a lot.
Well, no, I'm just, about how many people actually know all this list from the region. Surprising, me.
Yeah, and in classes past, it's like, oh, you recognize a lot of names, which to me is a testament.
Two thirds of the people on this list.
Well, there you go, you're a connected guy, yeah. Um, but that went well and I'm looking forward to the Riley County session. I've been working with, um. Christian Bishop and Ryan Alms from Manhattan Fire and Tiffany Cutting, um, with Varney Associates, she's a board member as well. On planning the schedule for the Manhattan Riley County session and it's, I think it's gonna be a good one. Something I need your opinion on today, I have visited with Rich about this. And I'd like to create a communications policy and procedures manual. And to give you an idea of what I wanna do with that, I just included like a, a draft table of contents for what that might look like. Scroll past all this other stuff. So I've been working on the elements and Elizabeth was kind enough to help me organize and. Think about how to draft a manual, um, the first part of it, before we get too deep into this discussion, I wanted to talk to you about colors. And this relates to the, um, the new, uh, parcel search website that Cory was talking about. As they get that set up, we wanna make sure it is branded correctly, so it is part of Riley County. And, but soon we have the opportunity to do a web, excuse me, a website refresh with Civic Plus. This is a small change, I worked with a couple of department heads to talk about. What would we want to refresh? Is there an opportunity to change colors a little bit? I don't have a drastic suggestion, I just wrote like old versus new on the little style sheet that I handed to you. The goal is to have a, a little bit more professional look that. That is really rooted in the natural environment of the Flint Hills. So you'll see like I named them. I chose like complimentary colors that aren't too different than what we have now. It's just a small tweak, but if, um. If you give consensus to kind of move forward with that, we can, we don't have to change a darn thing. We can keep the color scheme just as it is, if you're, if you're happy with it. I just want to make sure that we are setting up the new parcel search website to be a companion piece to the Riley County website.
I'm happy with what we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's sleek, it's streamlined, it's simple.
Okay. So no changes. We'll do what we've got.
I, I, nah, I don't even.
Okay. So we'll keep the existing ones. And the refresh then of the Riley County website will probably be a little bit more of a reorganization. Um, to make sure that we have things in. Placed in a way that people find easy to use and we might update some of the icons and some of the pictures, but we won't. It won't look like a brand new website. We'll keep the current colors.
Can we? Get updates on that ahead of time? Because when we did it last time, it. Shocked a lot of people and it was hard to explain.
Yes. So I will absolutely keep you in the loop with that.
Change is difficult. Yeah.
Okay. So consensus to keep the colors as they are. Jump back to, um. Ideas about a manual. So. The Public Information Officer position, like in general, this is sort of a new job that exists and it's a relatively new position at Riley County. I've been here almost four years, but, um. The, the communication landscape, of course, has changed dramatically over the past decade or so. And having like the, having clear processes and clear procedures in place, I think will be really important as things continue to evolve. And I'm not suggesting that we do things exactly the same way every time. You have to be responsive. But I'd, I'd like to put in place like the guiding principles and the best advice. And write down procedures in a really specific way. Back in 22, when the tornado came through on a Saturday in June, I was in Topeka. And being a department of one, having things written down so another person can maybe take the mantle seems really important. Um, Aaron Wintermeyer with RCPD was the one who showed up to the EOC and was putting out messaging kind of on behalf of the emergency. But he had to use RCPD channels. Uh, another portion of this I was going to bring up a little later in the conversation. We have an MOU. That I can step in and help RCPD and have access to their accounts in during a large scale emergency. To have a new person in that position and he gets comfortable. I'd like to initiate a reciprocal MOU. So that we have at least two people who could. Um, help with communications. The bigger picture is getting the Everbridge information out during an emergency. We have backup systems in place. Lori does a great job of that. Dispatch, dispatch has access. So that part is taken care of, but then kind of the follow-up communication for. What happens after the big event, the recovery that would take place. Um, through the media, on social media and on our website. I want to make sure more than one person has access to do this.
How many different agencies have PIOs? Or whatever that means.
We have a Flint Hills Regional, um, Association and I. You know, the city has a PIO, Riley County PD, K-State has Communications Team. Um, Fort Riley has Communications Team and Beth has, has a team. So I, I can get you a list.
Three days.
The district has two people. Pot County has Becky. We collaborate with Junction City now has a PIO. Junction City PD does, um.
Sheriff's Department. Gary County.
They don't have a dedicated person. Gary County, um, Emergency Management. Has given those duties to, like, there's an admin assisting Kim who's.
Yeah.
Wonderful. She does communication for them. So it's piecemeal. Not all the roles look the same. Um, but we have a group in the area that we would call upon. I worked with, um. Shawna Hartman and Becky Ryan on that last, the big fire up north we had last year.
I guess the only reason why I'm saying that is if you're developing. Policy here, it only seemed fitting that maybe that's a policy that should be developed. Kind of regionally so that can be used because accidents, disasters, whether they're natural disasters or man-made disasters. Aren't going to just be limited to Riley County.
Sure. We have collaboration.
Okay.
But, and we have, um. Like we have meetings, we have understanding with there's ways to do things, but getting a policy adopted by so many different agencies.
Well, they can choose to or not to do so. That's.
We have it written, we have it available to them. They're probably going to want to do things their own way. But during, during a large scale emergency event, we do it the incident commander's way.
Oh, okay.
So.
Gotcha.
Yeah. If that makes sense. Okay.
The no consistent policy, you know, very good idea.
Yeah, just leave it. So just being real, you have to think about that, getting you ready to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and I, I've been. Um, I, I've been working on pieces of this for a long time and I have a lot of elements in place. And I think it makes sense to just kind of create the thing, but I. I mean, I can't just create it on my own. It would be, it would need to be an official and you'd have to read a whole big manual. Decide what you'd like to do, but if, so today I would just kind of like to get your advice about. Whether or not you think, whether or not you support me. Working to create a document for Riley County Communications that includes. Guiding principles as well as the nuts and bolts, bolts procedures for what is the PIO responsible for on election night? So have that all written out. In case, you know, I, I don't like to say like in case I get hit by a bus, but in case I win the Lotto. And you never see me again, there's somebody, there's something to follow.
Are you playing the Lotto?
I do sometimes play the Lotto and you will never see me again.
Um. Maybe I'll make a suggestion. You know, we're planning September 8th, coming official edition. Might be a good subject to, to do this. Um, I think we need a little bit more depth than, than just some points on that.
Oh yeah. This was just.
Well, no, I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, I confirm information that I got.
So Vivian, are we putting out like? Two, two documents, like one for emergency management, one for regular policies or?
We already have that. So there's, there's a, a crisis communications plan for the health department specifically. There's crisis communications for. Emergency responders. So that's kind of a separate, that's a plan that, um. We work on as part of the ESF functions. And gets updated regularly and work with Lori and Russell and Robert on those things.
That works for, uh. Major catastrophe, basically, things like that.
All scale. Like if it's an emergency situation, there's, there's a procedure to follow.
Alright. Like it's.
Yes.
We just want to be sure the board understands that these policies would be developed by them in an emergency worst. They're not qualitative until you approve it. And you guys have input on the finalization of any policy, just like all.
So even so, look through.
You kind of put everything together, you kind of rewrite everything, you know, I mean, this is big time for me.
Yeah. And these are elements I've kind of, a lot of the things that I already have in place for my internal working. Um, just to understand how to do my job and what my processes are, having some guiding principles like, um. Included, let's see.
The top end, the mission and department needs to understand their, uh. In the community.
So we're doing things consistently in a way that best supports the mission of Riley County. If that makes sense. So, um, if we have. This is a checklist. Wow. So one thing I want to improve is internal communication. So if we have. Something going on in Riley County that will, that will affect staff, will impact the public. We are telling our internal people what's going on and giving them tools to understand the situation. So. Oh gosh, I can't think of an example right now, like even moving to the new space.
Well, the First Amendment.
First Amendment auditors. So, um. I have that training in place. I have. That's not something I would necessarily create a message brief about. It would be like the move to, uh, the temporary chambers here. That I want all of Riley County employees to know that this is happening and why. So we make sure we get all these, um, points that we, we've got the topic. We know who needs to hear this message. What is happening in plain language? Why it's important, who's involved, who would be the point of contact, the dates and deadlines? And a little bit of talking points. So if we have something like that going on. That I have a little checklist, people have an understanding of like, oh, I should. Talk to Vivian about this or make sure I have this information gathered. So we can keep our staff informed and then create if it's something that's going to impact the public. This is the way that we do that. We notify these people in this way at this time. Kind of thing and not rigid, not that. Every sentence structure is going to be the same. Riley County does ABC, Riley County does XYZ. There's flexibility in marketing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. That's. But also the style guide, like I talk about in the, um. Kind of the first little draft of the, the logo juice guide. What is the tone? We are friendly, professional, respectful. Instead of, um. I don't know, I'm flinching. Yes. Um. Terms that we use that we say three o'clock PM, written this way, not this way, for the sake of consistency. Just written down somewhere that this is how we do things. I see. I see.
Further.
Yeah.
Yeah. That sounds good.
Sounds like you spent sleepless nights on.
Sleepless.
And maybe look for an example of us, another empathy assistance.
Yes, I have lots of good examples of that. So, thank you. But it's what I, these are all the things I do. So I want it like. Written down so we have an understanding, but I will bring it back to you. It's a lot to hit you with. Thank you for your time. I'll come back.
Reporting Commissioner Michelle Reed, Human Resource Manager. I'm here on behalf of the onboarding committee that we have. And I'm here to talk about a Riley County onboarding program. Um, currently we are, we have completed phase one, um. Riley County hasn't had a formal onboarding program in the past. So over the past five years, we have been putting this together, trying to develop one. We talked with organizations like RCPD, the City of Manhattan and the library. Um, to talk to them about the program they have and the success that they have had with it. And so, um, we've been creating one for Riley County. Um, the goal of onboarding is to create a program that supports retention of high performing employees. It's going to foster a sense of belonging, promoting early productivity. Driving long-term engagement and commitment, strengthening alignment with Riley County values. And an exceptional on, um, boarding program is vital to retention and success. And we do this because we want employees to feel welcome. We want them to be equipped and valued from the start. They are more likely to remain loyal, thrive in their roles and contribute positively to our workplace culture. In today's competitive labor market, exceptional onboarding experience is vital to both employee retention and organizational success. And it's been proven that most organizations have some kind of formal onboarding program. And so Riley County wants to do that. We have completed phase one and in this, um, that's consisted of day one orientation. Um, with new hire paperwork and benefit information being sent out to employees before day one. Um, it used to be that employees would start on day one. They'd fill out all their, um, tax forms, all their new hire paperwork. They'd been given benefit information. All of this is just handed to them on day one. Now we send this to employees when they, um, accept the formal offer so that they can have it all completed. They can go through our benefit information and have all of that before they start on day one. We also have implemented day one orientation. Um, before there wasn't a consistent basis of new hire orientation. It was done on random basis, maybe monthly, quarterly, but not on day one when it should happen. So now employees start, we tend to start them on Mondays. And they go through their, um, new hire orientation with HR and we start them at eight o'clock. And we keep a structured time so that, um, department heads, supervisors, they all know orientations are on Monday. We're going to start them at Monday. They're going to meet with HR at ADM. We've also integrated finance into day one new hire orientation. Um, before the new employee would meet with finance at some point to do, um, P card training before they had access to their P card. Um, now after the employee meets with HR to do the benefit and policy overview. They will meet with the supervisor, uh, or with finance to do the P card training. We have also implemented IT into day one orientation, um, before. IT would send the information, um, logins, passwords to either HR or the supervisor. And then the supervisor would be responsible for getting the employees set up and, um, access to everything. Now, after the employee meets with HR and P card, they are taken up to the IT offices. Where IT, um, assists them with downloading the apps that they need on their phone, getting them their system logins. Getting their email set up and making sure that the employee is fully connected before they even go into their office. And we also integrated, um, new key access process and forms. Um, before, again, this was requested day one or after to get employees access. Now supervisors can submit all of this before day one so that things can be ready for the employees when they start. Uh, we also, uh, conducted an employee survey. We sent this out to 20 employees that had been hired within 60 days to two years. So we had a scale and a variety. And this was to gather their feedback, um, on their onboarding experience that they had. Which gave us some insight on how we can approve, um, our onboarding process. Uh, we also developed, um, goals for 30, 60 and, um, 90 days. And these goals are to ensure that employees, um, feel supported, integrated and empowered. They're progressing from orientation to independent impact while building long, um, term engagement and success. And so the goal for the first 30 days is for orientation and foundation. They're, um, meeting their team, they're learning their job responsibilities and their performance expectations. Um, they're just kind of starting out and getting in and building their foundation with Riley County. Day 31 to 60, the goals, um, deal with integration and growth. Um, they are working more with their team. They're building relationships. They're kind of getting some goals from their supervisor. And just making sure that they are continuing to grow, grow in their role. Um, day 61 to 90, the goals are ownership and impact. So hopefully by then employees are working more independently. They are strengthening relationships, um, with their team and their department and across some other departments. Cause there are many departments that do, um, work with each other. And so they're building these relationships. So now that we have completed phase one, we have come up with phase two and that's what we're proposing, um, to go forward with. We have created a new hire navigator and we created it in two parts. And this is going to provide, um, employees with a structured, a structured, interactive guide. That will allow them to explore Riley County culture, policies and resources. So we want the employees, um, to feel that, again, that they are supported, that there's a smooth transition. They're building cross-departmental connections and they're ensuring employees feel confident. Um, engaged and prepared to succeed in their roles. We did this in two parts. Um, I got feedback from the department heads, um, to do this in two parts. The first part will be within their first 30 days. And this just gets them, um, to be more familiar with their role, um, more familiar with their, um, department. As long as, and as well as getting some resources that based off of the survey that we did. Employees wanted to have handy, um, to find these things. employees wanted to have handy to find these things. And part two is kind of the same thing. Again, exploring more of their department and their role and some resources that employees felt after they had been here for a little bit, they didn't know how to do or where to find the information. So again, it's helping them have those tools and find those activities for themselves. We also want to implement a 30, 60, 90 day check-in process. The goal of this is to provide new employees with a structured 90 day onboarding experience that ensures that they feel welcomed, supported and engaged while they're progressing toward independence, cultural alignment and meaningful contributions to the organization. And so we broke this down with 30 days being a check-in with the supervisor and department head. They're all going to sit down together and they're going to go over their onboarding experience, training and tools, communication and feedback, job role and expectations, challenges and opportunities. At 60 days, we're going to have the employee meet with H R. Again, we're going to go over feedback and communication, policies and procedures, engagement and growth and onboarding feedback. And then again, at 90 days, the employee will meet with the supervisor and department head. We're going to go over the performance up till that point. Support and development, set up some goals and go over engagement and culture. So why is this important? Well, the new hire navigator that we're wanting to implement will allow a smooth transition, excuse me, into the organization. And it's going to allow them to explore again, our company culture, policies and give them the resources that they need. The 30, 60, 90 day check-ins are going to allow for structured engagement at critical milestones. Those check-in points are just making sure we're staying in contact with the employee, making sure they know we're invested in them so they'll be invested with us. And this has been proven to be great with retention and productivity. So early investment in onboarding builds loyalty, reduces turnover and accelerates time to productivity. And the employees feel valued and supported, which strengthens our culture and our collaboration. The supervisors and department heads are going to provide direct guidance, feedback and clarity around role expectations. And H R is going to ensure consistency in our onboarding, clarify policies and collect feedback to improve our processes. And the employees are going to take ownership of their learning, connections and development through their guided exploration. These two things are not just a checklist. It's a strategic onboarding resource. It ensures every new employee is welcome, informed, supported and positioned for long-term success with Riley County. We would like to implement this on October 1st. I met with department heads and wanted to ensure them that it would allow us time to meet with supervisors in September to go over what is expected and to make sure that the supervisors are equipped with these tools and are able to provide the experience for the employees. So that we would like to move forward with implementing phase two with the new hire navigator and the 30, 60, 90 day check-ins.
The new power navigators, that'd be something on the computer they fill out.
So it's like a, it's going to be a form, like a checklist. They can do it electronically and print it out when they're done. But it's, it is a checklist so that they can write down, have the tool and they can reference back to it if they need to, or they'll have it handy for them.
Okay, so they fill out that's a, that's a go along, bring it out the show.
So you're not going to be getting phase one, you want to actually launch a call in the system.
We'll be, we'll still be doing phase one. That's just the stuff that we have done and will continue to do. Now we're going into this second phase to implement more into our onboarding program.
Do you have feedback on employees of phase one?
So we have, our employee survey was based on a lot of that. We have had a lot of feedback from when I T has been integrated into the program. We've had a lot of positive feedback because they're actually, if they have questions as they're going through it, I T can actually answer those questions instead of saying call I T to get the answer. They're there and they can answer those. So we have gotten a lot of feedback. And a lot of supervisors had been asking for more of a structured plan over the years. And so that's why we've been putting it together and making sure it's structured and it's solid and consistent. I have not received any negative feedback. Anybody on the onboarding committee back there, please.
And if I could share more statistics with them now, you know. I just think the why is important. So when we spoke to the department heads and kind of talked about why we should do this, one of the things that we looked at is the time to fill, so the cost there and retention of employees. And so I think it's important for us to understand like the retention of employees over the last three years. We've had 50 terminations, 16 of them. So 32% did not stay with Riley County one year. 66%, 33 people stayed less than three years and 36 stayed less than five years. And those numbers don't add up, right? Cause they're inclusive underneath there. But I think that is one of the most important things that onboarding is meant to address. Like capturing the person when they're new, making them feel like it makes sense where they work, that they can have purpose right away and that they're part of not only their team, but part of a Riley County mission and purpose. You guys have heard us talk about like the things that the current generation needs of workforce, not by age, but who people are in the workforce need to have purpose. And this is helping them understand what that is at Riley County. Anyhow, the department heads are all in comment with you, no question.
So when did phase one, when did the end of that time?
We have been implementing that, I would say, over the past three to.
Oh, my 2020.
Yeah, three to four years. Yeah.
It took a while to get that fully.
Sure.
Yeah. I started in August of 20 and that's when I was going like monthly, quarterly. And so May 21, we started trying to make more succinct onboarding. Every, every time anyone started and then you started that, started up in the 40, 22, it was really, because I'm here now, that I T portion.
And we, we learn more and more as we go to like our conferences and training that onboarding is just becoming more and more popular in organizations and that it's becoming more vital. When we, when I was in the department head meeting, R C P D said that they have one and it's been working out great for them. They've found it very valuable. And so we have taken some stuff from R C P D and City of Manhattan and the library kind of want to be on the same level as they are.
No, I think it's important. It's just approximately the best to say go to the world.
Yeah.
As one of the department heads that has significant turnover, you know, about, I feel like every year I'm here two or three times a year asking for, you know, to fill a position. I, I'm just very supportive of this. I feel like if we can make sure that our employees are engaged from day one. We try our best, but having, having specific guidelines and things to, to touch back on will, will be invaluable, I think. And, and, and we can make sure that they know, you know, from the beginning, what our expectations are and try to maybe, you know, get them, make sure they know what our, our culture is, what we expect and try to cut off problems earlier rather than waiting till we're doing their six month review and then finding out that, you know, we've missed, we've missed some, some major milestones or we've missed. You know, they don't feel like they're part of the team. And so I, I've seen the policies and some of the things that they're going to be implementing as far as, you know, I think it's hard when you're calling an employee and saying, you know, offering them the position and trying to give them all this information over the phone. I've seen what, what they're looking at as far as a letter that's going to go out as soon as they're hired and it spells out what the dress code is and what, where to park and all of those things that can be very overwhelming as a, as a supervisor, as a department head trying to remember, oh, did I tell them this? Oh no, I forgot. And so, and then as far as like the, the navigator piece, I really plan on using that too for even my longer term employees that, you know, do they know who our three commissioners are and what district they represent? And I think it'll be good for them to also work together and, and maybe help them answer those questions. Say, oh wait, hey, I didn't know that or I'd forgotten that. So I'm planning on using that also, not only for my new hires, but for some of my longer term employees. So I hope that helps in your decision-making.
Corey is a department head who is in support of it, but he is also a participant of the committee. So he is a member.
I, again, I agree everything Shiloh said and I, and I put my support to it as well. The phase one piece was really great. It really helped streamline. We've noticed in our department, when they come to I T and we take them through and go that, you know, we're building a relationship quickly because we're probably one of the first offices that they might be calling to, you know, and so forth. So we're getting that relationship with them as they get started. You know, we take it as far as all the way remotely to the computer they'll be at, into their applications and getting going and so forth. And, and that has really helped once they get to the department and they, you know, they're able to hit the ground running. The feedback on the survey was interesting and some things that were there and it, it justifies why we need to move forward with something. Some interesting feedback when you, you know, with department heads and so forth, kind of like Shiloh was saying, some of the ideas that were put out there. It spurred thoughts and conversations about how you could do better and make sure within your department, not just early on, but later on in, in their career to make sure that they're still engaged, they're still happy with Riley County and so forth. You know, we even had conversations about like, we kind of chuckle with who are the three commissioners? You know, it was interesting, you go back to when we had to do a, a remote employee day and we had the, the Dave Lewis trivia and so forth and things about Riley County. A lot of people that didn't know a lot of things about Riley County, well, those are some of the, the, the things that can be involved in this that helps them understand and get engaged more with, with Riley County and the things that go on. And that just builds more pride in who they're working for. And, and so I, I believe that it's a, you know, it, it takes steps and it might be a little slow, but, but it's definitely worth us putting in and implementing.
And, and just to kind of go off a little more of what Corey said. This is phase two. We are working on the phase three as well. Onboarding is not just the 30, 60, 90 days. I mean, this is something well past their one year of employment. I mean, onboarding is ongoing. And so this is just our second phase, but this is like a program we truly believe in and think that it will benefit the employees.
I think coordinating that because everything everybody does involves I T. The, the first thing you learn is what they all have helped this number for I T.
Does it happen?
And that's one of the questions in our new hire navigator is how do you contact I T?
Because basically everything everybody does. You gotta do something with them.
Any other question?
As I make a motion to approve the implementation of phase two of onboarding.
Been moved and seconded to approve implementation of phase two of the onboarding in favor.
Thank you, commissioners.
Speaking of I T. Speaking of, we're everywhere. Good morning, back again, commission. I'll make this one hopefully the short and sweet. So due to an internal promotion, we, we, we had a position change. We had an open position and an internal promotion to our network system administrator, which James Bridgers was hired into. So that is now opened our I T specialist. So. Yeah, don't leave, Dave. Dave? Have a seat. Well, yeah, good boy. Didn't mean it that. Well, a simple question, I figured since you would hear, I just.
Want to stand up my time, I tell you.
No. So I am here to ask for your approval to post and to rehire our open I T specialist position. That way we can get it published, interviews and get our staff fully, or our office fully staffed again. So if there are questions on the budgetary financial, it is already budgeted. So there is nothing, and this is not a new position request in regards to additional. It's just a rehire of an open position head. Critical to what we do, it's our frontline tier one support. I mean, currently, you know, Derek and James answer the phone. I can't get James moved back into the position that I promoted him to until I can get this one filled. Cause first and foremost, it's taking care of the phone calls and the emails as they come in. So I'm asking for your approval to refill the I T specialist position. So moved. So moved. Thank you, sir.
Been moved and seconded to approve I T G I S rehire from the I T specialist position in favor of.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning again, commissioners, Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director. And I am here to talk to you about kind of a more succinct approach to a continuation of, of training for first level supervisors and managers. We've been doing the highly effective managers program now for a year. We've been looking at it for over two and a half years of having the department head, the training committee look at like, what can we do to take less of a, what I say, a shotgun approach to training and more find one thing that we can grab a hold of that will cover the majority of things that supervisors and managers need to be successful when we promote them from basically an individual contributor, you know, from an employee who's doing a hands-on job to someone who has to supervise others doing that job. It's one of the biggest struggles most organizations have and it's one of the biggest changes in a person's work life when they get that, that supervision component. And so when we did this last year, the commissioner's direction was to go ahead and do a cohort. Let's see if it meets our needs and then evaluate it and decide if that's what we want to continue doing. So we have a couple of department heads here whose people have participated this last year. And I also have some testimonials attached at the back from participants. So the participants that had to put testimonials in were Donna in Tandy in the treasurer's office, both supervisors, and Lori Muir in currently in public work. She started the program under the clerk's office and moved out there. And then we did have 12 total participants this last year. And many others have, have discussed how, what they got out of it as a supervisor and how that's helped their employee engagement. And so what I'd like to do is, you know, answer any questions, talk to you about any of it. I can certainly read these points to you, but I, I know you all have had an opportunity to go through that. I did bring the materials with me that each person gets. So each person who participates does get the handbook. Very nice, easy reading. I don't know that you can see it from there, but it's not, it's going to be like something that takes them hours to read. They get a workbook, which they then work through these things, these activities and these projects through the month. And then they meet together each month for a two-hour session. And I think it was Brittany, but one of the participants said the thing that, and actually multiple people, actually David might have said this as well. But one of the things that valuable about this is that it's not, I go to a, a training, I'm there for one day and I come home with these great ideas. I come back to work with these great ideas, but I don't have, I don't have that consistent group to implement them. It's not ongoing. So this, instead of being, you know, everything thrown at you in one piece, it's thrown at you in sections. You learn it together and then you have homework to participate with your staff. So actually enacting that over the month and it's stackable. And the reason we want to pick one program is so that it's a kind of a cultural learning so that, you know, other departments, other supervisors, other leaders have that same knowledge, that same style and that same terminology. The other thing that was really nice about doing a larger cohort, the 12 people was that they could intermix with each other, right? So they didn't only have H R to talk about, about to these training programs that they wanted to implement or this one-on-one meetings. They could go to each other. And I know those group of people who I had testimonials from did that. They called out to the other departments and they said, hey, how are you doing your one-on-ones? Or what is this, you know, the, how are you tackling that? The other thing is this presenter, this, this facilitator who wrote the books and made the program is readily available to us. So on more than one occasion, I'm looking over Shiloh because her team took advantage of this. He was, they said, hey, we're having, we're trying to do what's in, in the book, but we're having some resistance with A, B or C. And he said, okay, let's, let's jump, let's set up a video call, let's talk through it, let's talk through ideas. And so then they could implement those ideas together and come back and. Um, and so then they could implement those ideas together and come back and say, okay, yeah, this worked. And they had, they, in those circumstances, had great success. Um, some people who were hesitant about like one-on-ones, maybe a little suspicious of, you know, why, why am I doing this? What is my supervisor looking for? We were able to explain it differently through this facilitator and then greatly accepted. So those are, I think, some of the points. Um, Rich and Shiloh both had, had people, if you have questions for either of them.
I actually met him in person.
Oh, great.
I think two years ago to let's say.
I was going to ask where, that's interesting. I have never met him in person. We've talked a lot, but not in person.
That table set up there.
Oh, nice. I can't, I don't remember, I can't tell you. I started looking at this, I looked back in twenty-two and I can't tell you how I would cut onto it. Maybe even you brought it back, to be honest, I don't know. Yeah, I can't quite remember, but I was surprised I'd look, at the end of twenty-two is when our training committee started talking.
It might have been twenty-two now that I think about it.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, how many managers have we had that's come through?
So we've only done one cohort, we've done one year, so we've had twelve. Um, right. And so the idea was to give it that year and see if it was a good program for Riley County to adopt on a regular basis. So that's, I guess, what I'm saying, as our ref, our, our experience was positive and useful for the supervisors and their employees. So we would like to continue.
Well, this is not, this is for supervisors, for employees, not necessarily for managers.
Nope, this program is really for managers and supervisors. Um, but Lori, she's coming over. So there is, this is great actually that she's here because there is a program he's developed for employees. And we don't have that officially adopted, but Lori has adopted it as a supervisor on her own and has having great success.
Yes, I've adopted, I went through the training and I appreciate it because it was great training. He is very assessable, the, the leader of this. Um, we can talk to him, call him anytime. I purchased, what, a book for all of my employees or books for all of my employees for the highly effective employees. And we read a chapter, we have bi-weekly meetings, we'll read a chapter.
Oh. Don't throw that on the floor, but yeah, I have the book.
Gave us a, he gave us a free book.
Yeah.
This, this shelf isn't quite long enough, it just falls right off the sign. So anyway, my team is reading this book, we read a chapter every two weeks and at our bi-weekly meeting, we review the chapter and then I've been meeting with Tim, the author as well. We talk about what I talk about with my team, what he suggests, you know, if I'm having any issues, he'll give me advice. So, and my team's great, they're, they're, they seem to be enjoying it right now. They're not complaining about it, so I assume they're enjoying it. And so it just feeds off of what I learned in my year-long program. It's just kind of going down the line. And then I'm learning stuff from this book too. I'm learning how to be a better employee as well as a supervisor. So.
We'll stay. Thank you. Yeah, so there is an employee program that was developed. I think he've developed first the managers and then he has more of a leadership program. And then now the most recent is the employee program. And Lori had originally just purchased the book on her own and I don't, I guess I didn't get details of whether or not now that John's supporting that, has he bought the books? Yeah, he's bought the books for the employees. So, but you know, she was such a believer in it, she talked to us about just buying it on her own and paying for the books because she wanted to implement it. So very good experience.
So you're kind of outlining this to, to um pay for another five participants.
Well, it would be up to.
Your, your motion isn't, right, says five.
I know. You know, somebody told me that, that's wrong, that's the, I used the car from the previous to try to get it down, but yeah. It is copy and paste. Yes, you're right. And I'm sorry, I, someone actually told me I would have, I did not go back and change it. I, what I'm asking is for you to support participation in the highly effective managers program. The cost would be a thousand dollars per person that would come out of the department's budget that would send the people. He said if we get twelve participants, he'll give us a discount. So if we have five, we have five. If we have twelve, we'll pay a little bit discount on the total. Um, I already have um five people that are like, um, if this is approved, we want to do this. The departments have put them on the waiting list, I guess. And that'll be great. That would be great, yeah. That would not be a bad problem to have, yeah.
Department just submitting names to you, say we'd like to see this person involved.
Yeah, Rich has two people in his department that would like to go. Um, Anna has two people in her department that would like to go. Shiloh has one person in her department. So that's where I'm standing, but other, I mean, we haven't even opened registration, so I haven't asked, you know, I mean, we've got some people, I have talked to David about um some of his leaders, but we, you know, we just don't know, know him yet.
Didn't start at the first year.
Well, this one, the next cohort starts October sixteenth. So if we can get that approved, we would like to do that then. Um, but he has, he kind of has, it's, it's not like a quarterly basis, he kind of has it starting and just tells you the date. So if we don't want to do it October, we can do it later. And I apologize for that motion. It's a copy and paste. Yeah, you did that one. I will get sent the right motion. And just to kind of touch on that though, so the idea would be, we would have one for senior leadership. NACO is the senior strategic leadership. We would have one for our local communities, how do we collaborate? How do we meet each um other partner in our community well and can, can work with them? And we would have one specifically for being better supervisors for our employees.
Do we need a motion?
You do, but not this one. If you could use the recommended, recommendation, please.
Do I make a motion? Um, Commissioner, I guess we approve the continued participation in the highly effective managers program.
I will say.
Thank you very much.
I don't know. That felt like me. And uh, a question for you too. I had a very productive Tuesday. I had a very productive Tuesday. She knew the United States. As I said, we have some important other business to take care of, right?
To restart of the, of the season.
Week zero doesn't count because of your zero.
Slow, that's true.
Yeah, um, you know, I think we're going to struggle a little bit on Saturday. Um, just the jet lag and everything else, we're just getting off our routine. I think the point spread's twenty-five and a half and North Dakota's not that great. That was twenty-five and a half when I started. Yeah, they're above average, they can score some points when they need to, so we'll see, but um, I'm playing at home, you can come in a nice. I can't remember the last time we had a fall night.
Chance for rain, they.
Is there really? Does change things a little bit, but you know, I think, I think we'll cover the, end up covering the spread. Um, I'm going to go forty-two seventeen.
That's thirty-five fifteen.
I don't know. I have forty-two.
Do twenty-one ten. Twenty-one ten, I had already picked twenty-eight, ten. Rob, you know, just say, damn. Uh, sorry, uh, thirty-one seven.
Thirty-one seven. What'd you pick last week after? Okay, we all lost, but. That's why we play the games. It is, alright, that is. I guess with that said then, if nobody else has anything, I'll make a motion to adjourn the August twenty-eighth meeting of the round counting missions.
What time is that?
Been moving second to adjourn that August twenty-eighth meeting.